I did get a BA in art history at Hunter College. Public sculptures and monuments are erected at specific times and places, and interpretations of history, values, and cases will change over time. We are currently in a very polarized time, and we should be aware that our judgment is going to be colored by this polarization. Some people are important to our present day understanding of our history, even though they are flawed or their accomplishments have negative side effects. We should strive to protect a balanced view of a historical person's accomplishment. Public sculptures may also have artistic value apart from their value as a commemorated work. I propose certain guidelines as follows. You should look at the merit of the historical figure or incident, and it's going to be in today's terms. The artistic merit of the work. Does it glorify historical figures or events more than we would do in our present times? Is there an unbalanced presentation of monuments glorifying one group of people and events to the exclusion of others? A sense of proportion and diversity should be maintained. I feel that remediation could be done at several levels. It doesn't have to be the removal of the monument or plaque. Maybe there could be additional interpretive materials to explain the negative side of the person as well as their accomplishments. And also the addition of additional monuments that represent other groups. As far as Columbus is concerned, most of us in this room wouldn't be here if it weren't for Columbus, so we should definitely take that into consideration. Perhaps we need to also show, not perhaps, but we should also show the tragic side effects of what happened after Columbus came to this continent. There were some terrible things that happened to native populations and their way of life. And one other point. If you are planning to replace and add new monuments, please consider using New York artists. There are so many talented artists in the city, and I feel that they understand the complexity of our neighborhoods.
Thank you. Teri Goldman.
Beautiful words from you. Beautiful people. We're one city. We're one people under God, and that's the one thing that's missing from this discussion. Without a sense of the common good, we are lost. I have a stone in my heart, and I feel as though a lot of us in this room are carrying stones in our hearts. How are we going to be teachers? How are we going to create art if we don't start feeling not only passion, but compassion? Please, let's take the emotion that we all are born in and use it for the good. The Jews, when they lose their hands, say, "God bless my teacher." Women, black women, you are the teachers of your children. Don't put stones in their heart. Free them. I've lived with a black man for 42 years. I know what it means to be upset as a black person. I'm a Jewish whose father was irradiated in the Navy during World War II and lived for 35 years with a cancer that embellished his entire head with sores. And yet, a lot bitter to be bitter loses the joy of life. And art, I'm an art historian, I have a degree in American art, I was taught to love people, and I really want us to get back together. We've had enough of this. We've had enough. We're all proud of who we are, but first, let us teach each other the best in each other. I grew up in Brooklyn with Dutch, with German, Italian, Irish, black, and the path along my garden was an Indian path, an ancient Indian path. And we will all be following in the same paths, one after another. Eventually, together, let us find joy again in America. And do not curse the president. He grew up not far from my neighborhood, and he, like me, learned that there's a variety of Americans, and you have to work together. God bless America, and God bless everyone here. And let the monuments stand, except the one for Mr. Sims, I must say. Thank you.
Thank you. Juliette, is it Chely? Charles Barron and Henry Reeser are IEDS.
My name is Charles Barron. I am an attorney here in New York City. I am a citizen of the United States of America. I am a citizen of the state of Israel, and for the purposes of this discussion, I am a Jew. There are two monuments, or plaques, on the lower part of Broadway, north of Morris Street. One of them is to Monsieur Henri Peton, and the other is to Monsieur Pierre Laval. Now, these names may not mean anything to you, but these names mean a lot to me because these two individuals in 1940 were the leaders of Bichy France. They took 75,000 innocent men, women, children, and babies and placed them on French trains and deported them to Auschwitz, where all but 3,000 of them were suffocated, for no reason except one: because they were Jews. Now, in 1931, there was a ticker-tape parade for these two illustrious individuals. Little pieces of paper fluttered through the sky all the way down to Broadway. Little pieces of paper do not breathe. They do not eat. They have no emotions. They cannot live, and they cannot die. I say to the members of this committee, when they are evaluating these two issues, whether the plaques stay or go, think of the little children and babies who were inside the gas chambers of Auschwitz because of Mr. Peton and Mr. Laval, and weigh their memories against the memories of the inanimate objects fluttering down into the streets of New York. We here in New York City have standards. And that standard is: Does the presence of that monument in this particular case enrich the city? Or does it denigrate this city? A monument to two mass murderers denigrates this city. And I don't care that the circumstances under which those monuments were initially erected was because they had a ticker-tape parade. Because if Adolf Hitler had a ticker-tape parade in 1929, that would mean that notwithstanding what he did in 1933 to 45, those monuments would stay. And I know that the city of New York would never stand for that. So I say, choose life. Remember the babies in those gas chambers, and remove those plaques to Peton and Laval. Thank you.
Thank you. Juliette.
Good afternoon. My name is Juliette Chely. I'm a proud Italian-American and lifelong New Yorker, born and raised in Staten Island, living now in Manhattan. In 1992, which was the 500th anniversary of Columbus's arrival in the Americas, I helped found a group called Italian-Americans for Multicultural United States, or I Am Us. We believe that Columbus is not a hero, a role model, or a representative of Italian-American-ness, and today, in advocating for the removal of the statue, I would like to briefly say why. We thought that, some of which has been alluded to. Reason one. Celebrating Columbus insults Native Americans and other peoples of color whose ancestors suffered from Columbus's misdeeds. As a longtime social worker in the public school system and a psychotherapist, I firmly believe that one individual or group cannot attain healthy self-esteem by participating in the degradation of other groups, which is what celebrating Columbus amounts to. This has mostly been detailed already. I would just clarify that Columbus did indeed start the transatlantic slave trade by bringing back to Spain so Native Americans as slaves. Reason number two, as Diane said, Columbus wasn't representing Italy or Italians because there was no Italy. Reason number three, and less emphasized, is that the Columbus holiday was actually initiated by rich WASPs who often despised Italian immigrants. Businessmen like Chauncey Depew, who was the principal agent for the Vanderbilt fortune, led the movement for a Columbus holiday in the 1870s and 80s. These businessmen and military leaders did this because essentially, they wanted to do what Columbus had done. They wanted to go into other countries and take them over, like Puerto Rico, the Philippines, and Cuba, exploit their resources, build trade routes, and gain markets. Columbus was a symbol for that. It had nothing to do with them for Italian, for them, with Italian-Americans. In fact, Depew is famous for saying, "The mystery of his origins," referring to Columbus, "enhances the charm of the story." Because the actual origins of Columbus aren't sure. So this was not about Italian-Americans. Now, Italian-Americans at this time were called beaten men of beaten races. "So much slag in the melting pot." These are quotes from newspapers. Until about 1830, Italians from south of Rome were classified as African or not white, and they did suffer discrimination and lynching. One incident I'll point to is in 1899, five Italian shotkeepers lynched in Tolu, Louisiana because they were considered too friendly to African-Americans. Reason number four. Just to say quickly, there have always been Italians who opposed the Columbus holiday, including protests in Providence, Rhode Island in the 1930s because the protesters knew that the phrase "organizers" were actually supporters of Mussolini, who are parents and grandparents later for World War II. And finally, there are other Italian-Americans to honor. Pick one. Vito Marc Antonio, East Harlem congressman, brought together Italian-Americans, African-Americans, and Portuguese to fight for House of Jolly Duh.
Thank you. Henry Reeser.
Good afternoon. My name is Henry Reeser. I'm a native New Yorker. I'm Jewish, and I'm grateful for this opportunity to share my views regarding the future of the equestrian statue honoring General Ulysses S. Grant, located at Bedford and Bergen Streets in Brooklyn. Yes, it's true that Grant's infamous General Order Number 11 to expel all Jews in the area under his command was the most anti-Semitic act ever taken by an American government official. However, we need to look at the context in which it was conceived, the extent to which it was carried out, and most importantly, how Grant felt about his action and the steps he took to atone for it. While there is no contemporary account giving Grant's reason for issuing this directive, we know that he and General William T. Sherman were greatly concerned about the profiteering in which goods were being thrown into and out of the Confederate states. They felt that this activity was aiding the South and thereby prolonging the war. During this time, General Grant was visited by his father, Jesse Grant, along with several Jewish businessmen who were to gain from the profiteering that the younger Grant was trying to stamp out. The general was furious as he felt that the older Grant was trying to use him as a means of continuing his illegal dealings. On December 17, 1862, Grant issued General Order Number 11 that called for the expulsion of all Jews from the area under his command. The general's action was noted in The New York Times as follows. "General Grant has issued an order for all Israelites in his department to leave. Consequently, there has been a general stampede." The number of Jews that were actually expelled from Kentucky was 85. Hundreds of letters were sent to President Nathan protesting this action. And this prompted the president to order the revocation of the order. This was done on January 4, 1863. During his campaign for the White House in 1868, Grant's four-time expulsion order of Jews received a great deal of attention. He did not deny that Order Number 11 grossly violated core American values. "I do not sustain that order," he wrote, hungry, and would never have been issued if it had not been telegraphed the moment it was penned and without reflection. Once elected, Grant became the first chief executive to offer a cabinet post to a Jew when he asked his longtime friend Joseph Selgman to be his Treasury Secretary. Grant became the first sitting American president to visit the synagogue during services when he attended an Israeli synagogue in Washington, DC on Friday, June 9, 1876. The purpose of this visit was for the centennial celebration of American independence.
If you can wrap it up.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Grant's presidency proved to be a golden age in US Jewish history. When he died in 1885, he was mourned in synagogues nationwide. Give me above. I request that this commission consider not making any changes in the status of General Grant's statue. To do so would be a disservice to this great America. And thank you for your attention.
Okay, thank you. Michael Madormo. Carol Romeo. And Patrick Waldo is our next three. Okay. You are, Michael, please. Go ahead. Michael, and Carol, and Patrick.
Good afternoon. So my name is Michael Madormo. I'm an educator. I'm also part of showing up for racial justice in New York City. I was going to say I'm a proud Italian-American, but that's been so made cliche today by so many of our so-called leaders in the Italian-American community. But I am an Italian-American who believes that we need to take down the Columbus statue and all monuments to colonization and white supremacy, including J. Marian Sims and Teddy Roosevelt. Personally, my grandparents were poor farmers in Abruzzo in central Italy, where they suffered devastation of war and poverty, and they immigrated to this country in the hopes of a better life. And I was raised and had a lot of pride in the sacrifices that they made. Rather than a celebration of my family's history and culture, the statues in the day that commemorate Columbus are a symbol of this country's legacy of oppression and the ways in which Italian-Americans, like my own family, have been complicit in this white supremacy. With all due respect to elders who have spoke today from my community, and I wrote down a lot of their quotes, like Phil Foley and Joseph Biden and others, who said things like, "Italian-Americans feel very directly disrespected by this attack on Columbus." Or, "Eradicated Columbus is a disrespect to my grandparents." I'd like to ask, who are they speaking for, exactly? Because they're not speaking for me. They're not speaking for Diana and Juliette and Joseph and other Italian-Americans who have spoke today. In fact, you know, in my opinion, we have a right to be proud and celebrate our ancestry. But as was said earlier today, and I forgot the gentleman's name, he asked the question, "Why can't pride for one community, Native peoples in this case, supersede the oppression of another indigenous people?" That's not necessary. I do also want to raise up a couple of quotes from Christopher Columbus's own diaries. Again, they've been said a few times, but there's so much whitewashing going on today of who Columbus was and what he did. So, quote, he said, "They would make fine servants. With 50 men, we could subjugate them all and make them do whatever we want." He concluded in his report by asking for a little help from their majesties, and in return, he would bring them from his next voyage as much gold as they need and as many slaves as they ask." That's the words of a mercenary. I don't know how many times we can repeat that. But that's a mercenary. That's not an explorer or a wager. That's not someone I'm proud of. Also, Professor Shiora brought up some really important points in his article. I want to raise up one other point in his piece, which was that this push for a monument was pushed from elite northern Italians, rich Italians who wanted to assimilate and use the cover of whiteness to protect the Italian-American community. It was not representative of Italians with working-class backgrounds and Italians with southern backgrounds. There are many that we could choose from. The Zen Education Project has created a whole list of Italian-Americans who fought for social justice. So if we want to represent the Italian-American community, let's go to that list and do so. Otherwise, I vote we represent the indigenous community and the suffering and the resistance of that community. And I'd last just like to say, it is not a choice between Italian-ness and whiteness. Okay? We can be Italian and disrupt racism and divest from white supremacy and claim our Italian heritage. Thank you.
Thank you. Carol.
My name is Carol Romeo. I'm a registered nurse, and I also have a degree in medieval studies from Columbia University. I'm hearing a lot of history here that I really haven't quite heard before. I've been very fortunate enough to live in two different countries and in several different states, one of them being Arizona. And when you live in Arizona, you do study a lot about indigenous people's history. And some, one of the areas is like match, what I studied in Arizona and studied in moving around Mexico, Mexicans in particular. I don't know if there are any Mexicans in the audience. But if you listen to some of what people are saying now, slavery didn't exist in the Americas before Columbus. And, you know, these diseases, it's true. Diseases did come to the Americas, but nobody in 1492 understood the genealogy. I mean, that's fairly recent science. Nobody knew what a bacteria was, what a virus was, or how disease spread. So when I hear this about the slaughter of the Native Americans and, you know, you can't have it two ways. If you're trying to enslave people to do your work, you don't intentionally kill them. Many of the Native Americans, very unfortunately, were killed by diseases that were not well-understood at the time. Again, this is a fairly recent science. And when I hear about no slavery having existed in the Americas, you know, when you live in Arizona, you do study the history of the Aztecs and study the history of the Apaches and several Native American tribes. They were not all peaceful. This idea, John Loosama has a show right now that will have you believe that all Native Americans from North America to South America were holding hands, skipping through fields, smelling daisies, and were all getting along with each other. It's blatantly not true. It's blatantly not true. The Aztecs were fearsome people. So were the Apaches. When the Aztecs were prisoners, they made slaves out of them. The history of the world, the history of civilization has this one negative part to it, and that's slavery. If you go back to studying ancient Mesopotamia, look at the hieroglyphs on the Egyptians, they have slaves. It's a very unfortunate part of history that the strong take over the weak. And, you know, isn't it wonderful that we have the mentality now that it's wrong, but somebody needs to go to Africa and tell Boko Haram that it's wrong? And, you know, and I hear, you know, I hear these things about the long this long. They said nine-year-old girls were, you know, were a premium. Well, excuse me, 14% of my DNA comes from the Middle East. All due respect to my husband and brother. Muhammad's youngest wife was, what, nine years old? When he married her, it was a different mentality. Does it make it right? No, it does not. But Native Americans did make slaves of each other when they were warring against each other. They took their captives. Not slavery the way you know slavery as far as selling people on a marketing roll, but they kept them amongst themselves as slaves. I mean, my goodness, you tell Mexicans that nothing good came out of Europeans coming there, you'll put, you'll put a lot of people at work today who make their living based on the cultures that happen when the cultures mixed. Okay? Now, I'm Southern Italian, so respect to you. I'm Southern Italian, but I'm also a Native American. My father was a World War II veteran. We're Sicilians, yes. We were not considered white. And I used to hear comments when I was a kid about it. But please respect the law. Celebrating is an explorer, the way they explore space. When Kennedy was president, talking about this, we're just.
Thank you. Patrick Waldo. By the way, I think we're, it looks like we're going to be here for another half an hour. Twenty-five, seventy. We're getting there. Folks and very proud of the channel. And also thank everybody who stayed. I really do appreciate and appreciate your being here, listening, and participating. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Patrick.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and for holding this panel. My name is Patrick Waldo. I am a licensed New York City tour guide. I'm also a second-year student at the Historic Preservation Program at Pratt Institute. I sit here today on behalf of my Black, Brown, and Indigenous comrades who cannot be here in the middle of a workday because they are working multiple jobs, because they are the longstanding victims of white oppression and the white supremacy that a lot of people in this room have been testifying to honor with the keeping of the Christopher Columbus statue. I want to send a message to the older white men who testified earlier. We're not revoking your membership to the Knights of Columbus by taking down the Christopher Columbus statue. You can still say the name Columbus. We won't take him out of the history books, I promise. Taking down statues does not remove history. It removes commemoration. And statues are put up very deliberately, with very deliberate materials, with stone and durable bronze and durable materials. Their positioning is up high, hundreds of feet or dozens of feet up above the people in a deliberate manner to provide a moral code for citizens to live by. These are not museum pieces that we're looking at. These are ways in which we are meant to live our lives and the things that we are meant to look up to literally. And to celebrate the father of the transatlantic slave trade, to celebrate white supremacy by honoring Christopher Columbus is not the New York that we purport to be. So today, I think we'd have to decide if we're in New York of inclusiveness or if we're in New York with Donald Trump. The person running for public advocate earlier offered a compromise. We don't need to compromise with white supremists. There's no compromising with white supremacy. You know, if we erect a statue to Mayor de Blasio and we discover years later that his affordable housing program was actually created to make real estate developers richer at the expense of communities of color, I hope we'll take this statue down. So we know now more about Christopher Columbus than we did when the statue went up in 1892. Let's use that information and the history that we have now to inform our decisions about the present. So I'll say, take down the Eric Simms statue, take down the racist Teddy Roosevelt statue, and take down the oppressed Christopher Columbus statue. Thank you.
Just want to say, if you have signed up, your name is in my hand right now on a card. We will call on you. So, the next three are Ginevra DiLorenzo, Sam Sherman, and Andrew Ross. The three of them. After that, the next three would be Bobby Dunnetson, Maureen Connor, and Dan Matzis. And so you are, your next.
Ginevra.
Ginevra and?
Sam.
Sam, is Andrew Ross? I think we, he's left. Is that right? Okay. So then, could Bobby Dunnetson come up in his office? Thank you. So, so pretty. Ginevra, your turn.
My name is Ginevra DiLorenzo, a lifelong New Yorker. I have worked as a laborer until I bring her spray ears and am now studying to be a midwife. I'm here to advocate for the removal of the J. Marian Sims statue. Thank you for giving people the opportunity to voice their opinions. It's come to my attention that J. Marian Sims is referred to as the father of modern gynecology. I've worked on his statues for almost a decade, and I've never heard of him. And sometimes the argument is made to keep statues up as a starting point for educational dialogue. I disagree. The discoveries Sims made will remain in textbooks, and the knowledge he gained will not be lost. But the manner in which he gained that knowledge on the backs of enslaved women should not be honored. It is unclear to me how a slave could possibly consent to be experimented on. Doctor Sims operated on black women without anesthesia in a time when there was anesthesia available. While that may sound far away and unimaginable, there is a direct line from Sims' thinking that women of color don't feel pain the same way white women did to the current disparities in our healthcare system. These racist beliefs... These racist beliefs persist, sometimes consciously, sometimes unconsciously, and continue to inform our care of people of color. We are working to narrow racial disparities in maternal mortality, and the city has formed a maternal mortality and morbidity review committee as a starting point for much-needed change. Many of us in the women's health field welcome this attention, but there is a simple thing we can do right now to show women of color that we value them and their contributions to history, and that is to take down the statue of a man who was lauded for portraying her.
Thank you. Bobby Dunneton? Oh, sorry. No, Sam. Sam, you're...
No problem. Hi, I'm Sam Sherman, no relation to General Sherman. And I am an actress, originally from St. Louis, but I live in East Williamsburg now. I've been in New York for about 10 years. And as you can see by my awesome purple t-shirt, I am a proud member of Native American. I'm not going to lie, I'm one of those activists that about a year ago, on a certain gloomy November day, went from zero to 100. But I am still at 100 and fighting for reproductive freedom and racial justice and equality. And I don't plan on stopping, so here I am. The statue of Jay Marion Sims was brought to my attention when the awesome BYP100 activist stood in front of it in hospital gown, stained with paint to look like blood. And I saw that monument and thought, how is this still a thing? And in New York? It's not our New York. So yes, maybe Sims made some discoveries in the field of gynecology, but he did so on the backs of Black women who had no say, who were bought and who were sold, and who were viewed as and treated like less than human, and who were forced to endure a level of pain that is unconscionable. Meanwhile, the white women he treated, they were given anesthesia. So I cannot imagine having my body used as a property to serve the greater good. That is not a cost worth anything, so why is monument up to honor it? Monuments are not notes of history. Then they would just be in museums and books. But monuments are meant to celebrate and glorify a person. They are meant to be seen by the public every day and respected and enjoyed. So the only thing keeping this statue up does is it solidifies white supremacy. It validates a world in which we were not all created equal and it excuses racism. So let's take it down. We're not erasing history. We are not erasing Sims. But let's just put Sims in a museum, put him in books, teach future generations the truth of our history, but take it down immediately. No one should be forced to look at it and celebrate or torture every day. That is not our New York. So how about instead, we erase some finds and we put up Anapa, Lucy, Betsy, and the others unnamed. I want to look and celebrate the mothers of gynecology, and I want to raise them up and I want to honor their lives stolen from them. That is our New York. Let's just read about Sims in history books, because he's a part of history, but he is not our hero. Thanks.
Thank you. Bobby Dunneton. If you could hand over.
I'm Maggie Dunneton, and I'm a student of landscape architecture at City College. And I just, I feel like, from a design perspective, the statue of Columbus, of Jay Marion Sims, of Teddy Roosevelt, they are, the removal is, I think, something that New York can really do to be a model city for your future generations. And just the design of having a removal of these symbols of oppression that were made by stakeholders in white supremacy, I think that that would just open up a huge amount of imagination for like, how we can live our lives. Monuments are monuments, and they reflect the values of a city. Are those our values? Are those things that we want to live up to? I feel like by having those, by not taking them down, we're making a very clear and strong statement about where we stand in this society today. We all know that Columbus led to this society that we live in today that was built on slavery. And admitting that this is wrong is opening the door for change and opening the door for maybe commemoration of Native people that lived here. This could be a kind of radical reimagining of how we live in society today and how we structure our systems.
Thank you. The next three are Maureen Connor, and Matzus, and Sammy Disu. Okay. Your first, Maureen Connor.
I'm Maureen Connor, and I'm an artist and professor of American from Queens College U of K. I'd like to thank the committee, Tom and Darren and the rest of you for your patience, especially today. I'm sure you're hungry now. I see you nibbling. So I'm going to be quick. I am here in solidarity with Maureen Ortiz, East Harlem Preservation, Black Youth 100, and the Coalition to Remove the Monument to Dr. Jay Marion Sims. If public monuments are memorial, are meant to function as repositories for values, which we've heard a lot about today, values, whose values are perpetuated and whose are ignored through the display of statues that celebrate problematic figures? Although Maureen Ortiz, the director of East Harlem Preservation, has been working tirelessly toward the removal of the statue of Dr. Sims since 2007, reconsideration of such monuments only became part of the national conversation after the fatal shooting of nine people inside the Emmanuel Avenue Methodist Episcopal Church in Charleston, South Carolina in June 2015. Most significantly, the outcry pressured South Carolina's governor to remove the Confederate flag flown over the State House since 1961. The focus on the State House also called attention to the many monuments that surrounded it, built post-Reconstruction in an effort by white supremacists to reclaim power in the South. Journalists began to report on the identity of the supremacist figures these monuments represented, questioning why they still held places of honor. Sims also has one of these monuments by the South Carolina State House. Sims surgeries were to repair vaginal fistulas, tears in the vaginal wall causing the contents of the bladder or colon to leak into the vagina. Resulting from obstructive childbirth or sometimes sexual violence, fistulas are common where there is limited access to prenatal care. When the owners of local plant patients asked Sims to treat their enslaved women suffering from fistulas, did they do so because they wanted them to experience less pain? Certainly not. In fact, one of the primary functions of young enslaved women, in addition to their physical labor, was reproduction, that is, to give birth to the workforce that would serve as the next generation of enslaved people. Vaginal fistulas made pregnancy and childbirth almost impossible. The demand for medical advances were based on the exploitation of enslaved women and in the antebellum South, followed by several... Okay. Can I just go quickly?
Yes, you're good. Wrap it up. Thank you.
What?
Just go ahead. We have a couple minutes more moments, but please wrap it up.
Okay. I'd like to insert a quote from, excuse me, from Terry Kapsalis, writer, anthropologist, and gynecological model from her book, Public Privates. If gynecology is premised on such practices as Sims, might the entire specialty be reconsidered in this light? If it were, we would surely find that the racism and misogyny underlying Sims' practices still flourished in contemporary medicine and its applications, particularly with regard to women and their reproductive organs. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Matzus.
My name is Demostheme Matzus.
Can you bring right up to your...
My name is Demostheme Matzus, or Dan Matzus, and I'm of Greek descent, and I'm testifying in favor of maintaining the Columbus statue. Columbus was born in 1451. Two years later, Constantinople was sacked by the terrible Turk and the Arabized horrors. Greece and Central Europe fell into a dark age. Europe was terrified by the prospects. Columbus was also terrified, because he could not, he could no longer apply his trade as a carter or fashioner of fabrics. And he went off to Barcelona and came up with the idea of reaching Indonesia by way of going west. And he pleaded with Isabella, an interna of Spain, to provide the ships. His next task was to make it across the Atlantic Ocean and not suffer a nidding. There was a halfway point where his supplies would not take them any further. But he continued on courageously, and he landed in the Bahamas, fortunately. And for this, the man is a next Alexander the Great, probably one of the most heralded persons we should honor. As far as how he administered his office after 1492, he didn't have any malicious intent. Pregnant Isabella needed their bounty, and he may have used some improper techniques to provide that. Ultimately, he was not satisfactory to pregnant women. He had, oh, and they removed him, and put in another governor. So I cannot see why, we cannot honor this man. He is an Italian Genoese that had the courage to make the trip, a dangerous trip. He is the great navigator of the unknown.
Thank you. Sammy Disu.
Dear members of the Advisory Commission, my name is Sammy Disu. I teach African-American history at John Jay College of Criminal Justice. I'm an activist and a member of Citizen Action of New York amongst several others. I'd like to thank the Commission first of all for doing what it could do to ensure as much community participation, especially given the timing of these hearings in the morning, but I think you're doing a pretty good job so far. Let me begin by agreeing with many that removing longstanding symbols of white supremacy in New York City should only be the beginning. After all, after the removal of a couple of statues undo the systemic issues of structural inequity, which has been the experience of Blacks and now Brown in New York or anywhere in America. But these kinds of open conversations can be helpful. The Taino peoples who welcomed the lost Christopher Columbus onto their island in the late 15th century still live on to this day, and some of their descendants must pass by the prominently situated Columbus statue, which says nothing about the decimation of their civilization, not one word. What kind of trauma and disrespect are we subjecting them to? And what about the millions of Blacks who were stolen from Africa to toil in the Caribbean in what we call present-day United States of America? What kind of damage are we subjecting their descendants to when we hold Columbus high upon that pedestal in Manhattan, without a single word to their internalized and accepted sufferings? Have you heard of post-traumatic slave syndrome? You don't need to have learned about it as a Black person. We're all recovering. This issue about the continued maintenance of, the continued maintenance of the Columbus statue and several others like it all around this city will eventually be settled with its removal, especially if much is not done in our time, in our contemporary society. They will eventually come down because they were erected upon lies of the supremacy of some, without any regard for the inputs of Black and Brown peoples who now have a voice and want them crashing down. Based on how I feel as a recent Black immigrant who calls New York City home, I can only tell you what I think your charge is. Your charge is to be effective in finding significant and creative ways to set the record right. And the extent to which you are effective will determine whether these painful visually visceral reminders come tumbling down in my generation or the next. Help us add our voices to this conversation, because we were completely left out by processes like this very one many, many years ago. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we are on our second-to-last panel. Oh, okay. Madra Kilgore, Diane Cohen, Christina... Good. House. And then a few more. Okay. And again, thank everybody for staying and listening. Okay. If you could pass the mic down to the side. Thank you very much.
Thank you. My name is Madra Kilgore.
One second. I'm sorry. If you could stop. If you can give the testimony to Nadia, and she's going to copy and give us...
I brought it in the box.
Oh, you did. Okay, thank you. Okay, let's get started. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. I was with the New York River one time. My background is, I like to describe as tasteful American blend. I think probably a lot of people in this room belong to that same ethnic group in various blends. And I'm not proud of it, because as George Carlin would say, I did nothing to get it, right? So I've heard some whitesplaining, and I've heard some what-aboutism, and I've heard some very, very well-informed and cogent arguments in favor of taking down these monuments. I think Jay Marion Sims is kind of a slam dunk at this point. The statue of Teddy Roosevelt with subservient human beings on either side of him is an insult to every human being on the planet, including me. And the statue of Columbus, okay, now we get into vexed territory, because the question is, what are we enshrining? What are we enshrining with any of these statues, actually? A lot of people have said, and I agree with them, we are enshrining white supremacy, that we are enshrining, and not only that, but as one person pointed out, it's not only about enshrining white supremacy and actually literally whitewashing history by saying that people are heroes who in fact were criminals. It's also the erasure of the history of people of color. So those two things go together. And we need to, we need to make some amends here. We need to make this right. We need to make this right. I don't want to cringe with shame every time I walk by the East New York Natural History. I don't want, those of you who have to cover my eyes every time I walk past on Fifth Street and Central Park, and I don't want to feel personally assaulted every time I go by Columbus Circle. I think that, you know, there are, there are in fact many, I'm not sure if I want statues of people at all. I think that we need to be our own heroes, although it would be nice to see, you know, good art. But, wait on, where was my thread here? All right, okay. So there are, you know, there are many people to be proud of in all of our ancestors. And in some of my sort of mixed ancestors, there were, there were bigots, and then there were the people they were bigoted against, right? But if we are enshrining, we want to be included in the group that does the oppressing, I don't think that's healthy. And if we're enshrining oppression on any level, it's not healthy for any of us. It's not healthy for a single human being. And, you know, not only the ones who have come and said, you know, my, this is an insult to my ancestors, it's just, it's an insult to humanity, and they need to go. And they don't need whitesplaining, left there with whitesplaining.
Okay. Diane.
My name is Diane Cohen, and I am a Native New Yorker, although I've been years in California and other places. First thing I want to address is that I don't know if the panel has been hearing the hissing going on. First thing I want to address is that I don't know if the panel has been hearing the hissing going on here. I'm having offense with that because I didn't come here to present. I don't have a dogfight. I came here and I got educated. I did not know about Dr. Sims. I learned something today. That's, you know, that's a good, because I didn't come with reservation. And to your point about your native, what, black and brown friends who think we're different than other people here because they couldn't be here. You don't know what I've given up to be here today because I wanted to be here today. So you can't make those assumptions because I have a problem with it. I don't like hissing, and I'm saying that because it almost polarizes me to say that anything you offer with hissing, I will get, because this is supposed to be a forum. I'm here more to talk about the destabilization of the times. Through this camera, with this camera, I've made the statues that are presently in front of every magazine. I've shot Aniina, not shot, foreground. Kim Kardashian, and Shikichi, Shikichi relating to these, these are... Like a hero to some people, she's a hero, Kim Kardashian and these other people. Now I've been watching, as we all have, in the last month, Space is Falling. Charlie Rose the other day. I mean, you sit back in front of my cinema, just gets a popcorn and just watches. Like, I don't have to watch reality TV anymore. I mean, I think it's much more complicated than we see. These are very, very difficult times. We all have a dark, a shadow part. We're finding that all our supposed heroes, Bill Cosby, Tavini, have fallen. And I don't have an answer. I don't have a presentation. But it's a very, very upsetting time to me to see everything be destabilized. And as soon as I started talking about the statues, I think that just the fact that this forum here is a very important theme that we're discussing it. I don't know what I want to be done with everything that's up there. Maybe we have to do a memorial to do it, and then a plaque. I don't have the answers. I do know that it would be a real mistake to allow people who maybe are likely to just have everything knocked down. I mean, every day I'm watching the folk heroes, whatever you want to call them, I read celebrities, that's my culture, that's what I was being, being knocked down. And it's very upsetting. And you, this city, which I lived in most of my life, will remain a place of safety, of stability. I think it would be a real mistake, I'll finish up. I think it would be a real mistake just to knock things down. I think we should think about adding things and enhancing new people, new statues. But I am one for not pulling things down because everything is being pulled down on a daily basis. And I think this society is becoming very destabilized.
Okay, thank you. Please.
That's what I'm trying to say. Do it aloud so they can hear.
People, folks, we got to please...
Whatever the hissing is for, I will be there. I'm just saying, if you can help with anything, I'm here.
We're trying to keep people to listen, and we've done a very good job. And I thank everybody. We are very close to the end. Let's get to the end with dignity. Thank you. Christina, you're in.
My name is Demosthenes Matzus, and I'm speaking in the name of the parish of Saint Stanislaus in Manhattan, as well as the Dusuzky Institute in Brooklyn. I'd like to speak to you about a country that once was and then disappeared, partitioned as it was by three highly empires, which treated it and its citizens in a colonial fashion. Education was limited. In one of the areas, children could only attend three grades of school, as it was considered sufficient. The areas of art and culture were also treated as being essentially unnecessary. And those individuals who wanted to paint, sculpt, perform, or sing on stage had to leave, much as scholars do, to other lands where they became labeled as being those nationals. Those who wanted to struggle for freedom were either sent to prisons or flung into exile. The average citizens of this country who emigrated to the United States were classified as being of a different nationality than their own. And they were referred to by various demeaning terms. Why do I speak of these people? Because many of them did travel and work to New York and in some cases their efforts were recognized, but only pleadingly. I raise this issue because the disregard of a nation in a multicultural city like New York is as demeaning and destructive to the sight of a child or adult as viewing what can be considered a demeaning sculpture. Removing a sculpture or a plaque is disruptive by its absence. If you wonder what nation I'm referring to, it is Poland. And over the past several decades, the Parks Department in the city of New York have, I dare say, actively removed or attempted to remove the signs and symbols of this nation. So, Pinacy Lampa Werski, painter, pianist, and mega-star diplomat and Prime Minister of the recreated, created nation of Poland, worked to help the Washington Arch at Washington Square Park. Yet not only did the city of New York not honor it, but when the tree that was planted by the Polish community in 1941 died, it was removed together with the two plaques which were present. That's next to Sam Cox's statue in Tompkins Square Park. There were no plans to replant it. It took a year of effort to replant the red oak. But for the past eighteen months, the community has been stymied in its effort to have the plaques replaced, with claims being made that there were no plaques there. Another person, Marias Skodoska, a prime example of a female who fought against all odds to garner the studies that she wanted and could not get in her occupied land, has been effectively erased from existence in the city of New York.
So can you just wrap it up?
Two sentences. She's known to you probably as Marie Curie because when she lived in France, she was forced to change her name. And the French decided, despite her insistence on using a hyphenated name, Skodoska Curie, to call her only Curie. So I ask you to walk down to City Hall Park and look at the plinth that remains. But the tree that was planted there was removed because it wasn't a Native American species. And a lonely plinth stands objectively. And a woman who means very much to the Polish community, as is, and is a great example of STEM, studies for girls, has no place in New York.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. One more pair. We have three, okay? It is, this is Stacy Chubb. Kamau Ware and Tamara...
I gave you. I bought him a piece right now.
Okay. I'm sorry, you are?
Stacy Shee.
Stacy?
Yes.
And we have Kamau. Is Tamara here? If not, it's the two of you. Okay, go ahead, Stacy.
Hi, thank you. Although I am a Jewish bisexual woman of certain age and have experienced hurdles and roadblocks, I did not come here representing any of that today. I never actually even heard of the two statues of French men before today. I'm also a person of privilege, and with that comes the responsibility to speak up. I'll share with you what I wrote after the first half. During lunch, I sent a post on Facebook. Wow, the failure of our school system, the subsequent ignorance of historical facts, the bold display of privilege and how it distorts your worldview, the lack of empathy and compassion, the inability even momentarily to remove yourself from your insular echo chamber of false narratives, the shifting of focus from the truly oppressed, enslaved, experimented on and murdered to a ridiculous claim of assault on heritage and tradition. All of that was on display today that truly boggles my mind. Although I like to believe I'm relatively... This isn't all about Facebook. Although I like to believe I'm relatively a well-educated New Yorker, I learned more about this issue today in a few hours here than in all my time in school. I've heard names of people of color to be honored that I've never heard before. The passionate Latina woman is an example of a bigger problem. I don't falter for supporting a mother's wishes to honor her hero who doesn't want to honor a hero. The problem is it's honoring a myth. It would not be whitewashing or erasing history to move these statues. It would be moving the burden of education to our educators, the professionals, to have interactive discussions and conversations with our children and the ability to update as new information is discovered. Leaving statues in place is not only traumatic to those forced to pay and view them, it feels like trying to teach complex history through soundbites and tweets. You can't. You will not find a statue erected to celebrate any medical breakthroughs that may have come from experiments on Jews, gays, Romani, disableds performed by Dr. Joseph Mengway during the Holocaust. Yet there's a statue of Dr. Sims. We have a memorial. Imagine being a woman of color walking by a statue of Sims in Central Park. Imagine being me now, a Jew, trying to explain to my daughter while there are two statues honoring Frenchmen responsible for sending children to the death chambers. Just as you will find no swastikas, no public memorials of perpetuating the ethnic cleansing, instead relying on education to ensure events like the Holocaust never happen again in Germany, we too can do the same. I do stand in support of the removal of these offensive monuments from our streets, parks, and colleges.
Okay, let me wrap it up. One more. Kamau Ware.
Not going last, I hate that. Well, I want to thank you for the Commission. I want to thank you for the opportunity to be, to speak and also to be heard. My name is Kamau Ware. I'm the founder of a project called Black African Experience, and we celebrate the African diaspora in New York City, walk the tours. And through giving walking tours, I've had to learn a lot about what's going on in the parks where the often isn't talked about. And I just want to just like pause for a moment and just think about how special this city is and how special the amount of stories that are present, that are spoken of and not spoken of. And just encourage us to see this as an opportunity to think about telling these stories is a way of just building a broader understanding of who we are as people, as citizens, and as souls. And one thing that I think about just from hearing the different people speak today is how much this history connects. And I think that I am more of an advocate, first and foremost. Maybe certain things are added to the conversation. The people from Angola and Icono that came to this island in the 1620s who built things that still stand today, such as Broadway, the Kiki Ford Amsterdam, building Wall Street. One of the first ethnic neighborhoods of New York City would be land of the black between East and West Philly, which that was in existence prior to New York City. And I think that these are opportunities to tell the story versus ignoring it because these are things that are well researched. The archives back it up. There's plenty of books about it, of course about it. But if you walk around certain places in New York, those stories are just not being told. And I think that it's a chance for us to better understand who we are because we come from this past that really has a lot of black history that just isn't acknowledged. And so the building of these different places like Broadway, this black community is one example. But also I think it's important to understand that when you have a city like New York, which is very critical in the transcontinental slave trade run by the British, is that you have people who were resisting slavery before Patrick Henry was born, before, you know, people who are nine years old, 35 years old, who are living about the mantra, freedom or death, who don't have any recognition that they fought against the British to end tyranny in a very real way before there was a debate about taxes. And I think telling that full story is an important part of anybody walking the streets of New York to understand how deep the history goes. We value freedom. We should value people who are black who fought against freedom too before the 1760s, 1770s, and 1760s. And last and at least, I want to mention that I found out about Dr. Sims when I was in London in October. And my ears went up because people, I'm a nerd, I know a lot of history. But I'm in London and someone's talking about the Sims statue and just happens to mention, oh, by the way, it's in Central Park. And I was like, word? And so when I came back and I began to like dig into it, I just want to like, you know, end by associating myself with everybody calling for it because that sex is a memory, so put it together.
All right. I really want to thank everybody. I think that it's extremely important. I guess you could clap now for everybody. I want to say, you know, that I spoke to the commissioners at the intermission. They were fascinated with everybody's discussion. I really want to thank everybody. If there are other folks that couldn't make it, we still have two more. We got Staten Island and the Bronx coming up. And if I may say, Happy Thanksgiving. That's not nominational. Thank you, everybody, for coming.